So let's begin. Let's call the order at 6:02. The Bradlborough Planning Commission of February 6th. Let's start with the any announcements that folks may have. I think Sue may have a couple.
I have two, yeah, that I can make. The first is that I received a draft of the Walk-Bike Action Plan today that is being sent to the steering committee members for their feedback. So that went out. I know Dan received it. So hopefully everybody else will. I've asked for their comments by the end of the week if possible, and the consultants will be presenting the plan to the select board on the February 21st meeting. So as soon as, I'll get it out to the planning commission as soon as we get the initial steering committee comments back.
That'll be great.
And my second announcement has to do with the Better Connections Grant. Steve and I had kind of a pre-application meeting with the staff from Vitrans and Department of Housing and Community Development, and we were able to talk through the idea, and they seemed broadly supportive of it. We did talk about the project area and whether or not it made sense to take it to the Guilford Town Line. And they seemed like, you know, that was kind of some coordinating, coordinated planning that we should be doing with the RPCs in the state. They didn't, they seemed to prefer to focus it on kind of the developed areas of town, more developed. So we just have to think about how we're going to handle that in the, in the application. But, you know, we'll definitely talk about that area. How much planning we do there, though, might be dependent. I think we can get it to the industrial park probably because there's activity there, but...
I saw Dan about to speak, but then he gave a thumbs up when you said...
That was my question. Are we thinking 91 or the industrial park is developed area? And that makes sense if it's industrial park?
Yeah, I think, well, we should be able to take it to the industrial park. So, yeah, and that is actually going to the select board tomorrow night. It's on their consent agenda to get approval to up for that grant.
Great. Always nice to have new, exciting projects on the docket, ready to, ready to start in on soon. I have a couple notes if no one else has any announcements. There was that, I think it was titled Climate Change and Land Use Presentation a couple or few weeks ago. I watched it afterwards, and it was pretty good. I think I watched it on double speed, so it was kind of a skimming, but I did pay attention. I think it was more or less a rehashing besides questions people asked of the document that I think Sue shared with us as well and that they were kind of basing it off of. And I put the document in our drive folder under the Plans, et cetera, subfolder. And so that has a bunch of recommendations by the Chittenden County Regional Planning Commission related to dealing with climate change from a land use lens. I sent an email. I realize I didn't quite understand either. I sent an email a couple days ago, I think, saying that the, I thought the accessory commercial unit background material wasn't in the folder in the sense that it was mixed up with the small accessory structure exemption. But then I realized, oh, maybe the small accessory structure exemption document was just one of the things, you know, listed under, you know, the staff recommendations. Right?
It is.
But since I didn't see the ACUs, and that was a separate folder and a separate file, I thought it was swapped.
Yeah.
So I hope that didn't lead anybody off course in thinking that that maybe document was irrelevant to review, but is the accessory structure exemption. But if so, you know, feel prepared when we come to it. I guess we can put it up, speak up, and we can deal with it at another meeting. But I did see the ACUs document was put in the January folder. So that's why that happened.
That's...
I was like, I swear. And since we keep repeating some things each meeting, but when you open a folder, they look similar. So, you know, there's other land use regs.
Well, you didn't say you had done it.
Yeah. Isn't everybody reviewing all the past meetings as well each time? Come on, we should have caught that. So, great. Okay. Unless no other announcements, we can speak to the minutes of January 4th.
I moved that we approved the minutes of January 4th. January 7th, sorry.
Was it the 7th or the 4th? For tech.
It was...
Six.
I don't even think that's right.
Oh, yeah.
The January minutes.
Yeah, the first Monday of January, whichever day it was. Okay.
I second it.
I think it's the 4th.
Yeah.
It was the 4th. We'll fix that.
Okay. Funny, it says six there.
Jeez.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns, insults?
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
All those in favor, please raise your hand. If you have a question or concern, flail your hand. Okay, that's all four of us?
Yep.
Great, passes. Moving on to the non-bylaw modernization grant. Oh, and for the member of the public who's present. Well, I was also looking on Zoom. Oh, there's someone on Zoom?
Yes, Brian Vannan's on Zoom.
Okay, Brian Vannan too. We do have the public comment period at the very end, but we just do that to at least make sure we don't miss anyone. But if there's something unrelated to the agenda items you'd like, any of you would like to speak to, just raise your hand or come up to the mic. But also feel free to do the same about agenda items during the agenda items.
Thank you.
So for some land use reg proposed changes that are not in the purview of the bylaw modernization grant, which is very housing focused, we have, once again, you'll see that we haven't gotten to in the past months, the review criteria about energy conservation and renewable energy resources and ACUs, and then the cornucopia of miscellaneous staff reps. So first, let's hit the energy ones. There's the memo from staff, which you guys have seen the last three months, and in the folder, I mean, we haven't gotten to it, and then my kind of proposed, roughly proposed suggestions of, you know, like what I think is a deficiency in our regs regarding that, and then an example from Montpelier. But we can do the memo first. I don't know if people want to ask for specific questions or a little summary from staff or if they want to offer something or...
I'll make a quick observation, Morris, that Sue, I get by earlier today. It's printoutable, because I've only been seeing electronic bits of it here. And this document, Efficiency Vermont, on here got me really looking at that. And that's a great resource that, online, if you haven't looked at that Efficiency Vermont, it's just, anyways, that was more of an observation than a question or anything. But anyways, that's a great resource. And while I'm on screen, anyways, this inherent trade-off between cost and benefits adoption...
Under number four there?
Yeah, number four, sorry.
Second line?
It's like a gray, or it, I mean, I guess not intended to be black and white. But anyways, observation, there's a lot more talk that I scope into this, but that was my talking on this.
Did you want Steve to address something there or...
He is who I should have been talking to about it.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to what we were concerned with if you would like to...
Can I just reel it back and make sure that, does the planning commission all understand why? Because it's been on the agenda for a long time, but we've never gotten to it. And Tom did say, you know, he was looking for a little bit more teeth or a little bit more, how do we implement these standards under site plan and conditional use review? And so that's kind of how it started, this idea of can we, you know, can we tighten up that part of the regulations and give some actual requirements?
Right.
So that's kind of to back it up. And I'll let, you know, we've prepared the memo of kind of the reasons why, you know, not supportive of something that is kind of dips into the building code area. And so I can... Would you address the notes?
Was it, sounded like the first sentence of that fourth section was, was that seen objectionably or was there a question specifically about that?
I think my work for that whole list is that it's going to end up in the realm, make some political, anyways, maybe we should get some kind of town. Nobody would attend to getting some kind of open town meeting about this or announcement about this whole subject, because it just seems like it's going to end up in that realm anyways to me. I think it dragged up more toes than we realized. And, but speaking, I really does this, this stuff. What are your observations about this?
So I think, to put it as succinctly as we can, because I know we've got a lot on the agenda, I recall having a conversation with Brian in the office one time where he framed it in a really precise way that I think is helpful, where, you know, it's not that the goal of promoting solar energy with this sort of a proposed land use regulation is anything objectionable, but that in sort of orienting the entire built environment towards being able to be fitted with solar panels rather than, I guess, just finding another potential way to, you know, maybe they have to be oblique to the building or whatnot. But putting the solar panel itself on, orienting that to the sun and not the entire built environment, you know, your structure, your roof, your street grid network, when we're probably not going to see the neighborhood scale level redevelopment at least anytime soon that would get to that level of scale, but even at the individual building level, needing to make changes to your building envelope so that you could choose to add solar, seems like it's, the potential benefit is minor, and there are other ways to secure that benefit. Like, that's not the only place that you could see EV solar developed, whereas the costs that that would add to a already incredibly difficult to pencil out construction sector in our area is a really troubling equation, I suppose. And I will say that all of those charts in the back are very back-of-the-napkin type stuff, but in just taking a few ranges of cost per square foot that were based on real projects that we had heard about in the area, and then just sort of extrapolating from that to how much it would actually cost to build a few different buildings. I don't think that this was explicitly connected enough to what was being discussed in the actual memo itself, but to put a more specific, more tangible framing on just how tight the margins are for actually being able to make a project pencil out, I figured that would be helpful, as well as showing just the breakdown of how quickly things become unaffordable to what percentage of households in our region. So, yeah, it's not that we have any kind of opposition to sustainability, of course, but I think there's a real trade-off here that would be potentially having the impact of stifling construction altogether, which would, of course, also not result in any more rooftops that could potentially be fitted with solar, because if the construction doesn't happen, then it also would not be, you know, developed in a solar-ready way.
Thanks.
Hopefully that was in any way.
No, that was a mutual.
So just to give a little background, you know, and I've definitely read this memo and I've spoken with staff, and, you know, definitely some valid, valid concerns here at this point in time. If you'll recall, several months ago, I also, you know, provided something with a little attempt at revising myself the numbers 10 and 11 DRB review criteria and generally, you know, without a staff memo, but with some comments at the time, it seemed like people were like, eh, let's not move on that now. But I thought, you know, finding an example from Montpelier, not necessarily the exact wording that they have with, I do recognize that the, it seems quite stifling to, you know, when there's already buildings within an already built neighborhood to have restrictions about what building shades another building. But I did like the wording about, you know, ensuring that certain buildings have, you know, solar-ready roofs and whatnot if they're being built new or significantly renovated, and maybe that new subdivisions as well, if any, would be positioned inside it well for solar. But, so I just wanted to kind of give a more, maybe not thorough, but a more kind of concrete example of what I was thinking of from a community in state here, what they've done. But if other people don't feel strongly, it's, one thing Steph, you know, that we were talking about and in the memo is maybe first we should spend more time, you know, in the next year or the year after with like focusing on climate or green zoning and, you know, do some community outreach, and maybe in two or three years when we start working on the town plan, have, you know, a climate mediation, remediation, recognition, whatever chapter, because I think some town plans do, and we don't, we don't have that. But if there's no strong thoughts, you know, advocating for this or against it, then I'll take the comment from the member in the room.
Thank you. Jason Van Esse, I'm an architect and architecture professor here in the community. I have observed that many times when a building envelope is dictated within a community at a large scale for just such a well-intentioned reason, not only do communities begin to feel competitive with other people's building envelopes, but also old-growth trees and other solar impediments. So might the planning commission consider a blanket encouragement towards all renewable energy sources and not focus its encouragement to one renewable energy source, just so that we're not, you know, disincentivized to grow tall trees?
Sure.
Or compete with our neighbors for aspect?
Yeah, I personally haven't thought about too much about like how we could encourage wind, you know, in the built environment, because it doesn't seem to layer upon any structures or development that I know of. And, you know, people don't have rooftop methane biodigestors, to my knowledge, but it's just my lack of, I'm totally in support of, you know, encouraging it broadly and not being so choosy, but it just seems, from what I've seen, there's more, there's more integration of solar with land use regs than the other things. In fact, that climate change paper that I addressed earlier brought up some encouragement of solar-ready zones over parking lots and buildings.
You made some excellent points, but if I may.
Please.
We also have the ability to encourage geothermal harvesting, which would be a heat energy source even within our boundaries. And if that could be balanced out in certain places where there may not be competition for solar, it'd be great for developer, even at the sort of household scale, to have a portfolio of options that would satisfy this kind of encouragement and not one.
Yeah. Yes, Sue?
I just want to make a kind of shameless plug, but it's important work. So Todd had mentioned Efficiency Vermont, and Efficiency Vermont is currently, has a year-long project with, in Bradlborough, where they're working with homeowners and renters with specific incentives for Bradlborough. So they, Bradlaw from Efficiency Vermont has been making presentations at the senior center and the library and all around town, and there'll be more coming throughout the year. So the town's been partnering with them on that, so just want to make that plug.
So that was that meeting they had Sue down at the senior center. I remember that. There is one going to be coming up pretty soon. But if I'm not mistaken, aren't they still working on that of, in Montpelier, I guess, certainly?
So there are lots of state programs that are rolling out with the federal ARPA funds.
Yes.
Actually, some of which, you know, could be of interest. There's grants for up to $500,000 for, this is for municipal building improvements. There's also $4,000 educational type funding where it's pretty broad. It can be community education, it can be community meetings, it could be, you know, so there's, you know, ways that we can maybe be looking, working with the sustainability coordinator in the town to kind of look at how we can use some of those resources in the coming year to maybe get community buy-in on something that maybe would end up in the land use regulations or just be part of the bigger plan.
I think there are a few ag also that are coming that I was reading on today. Those should be interested.
Lynn?
I was just going to say, I've read the memo, but I'm clearly missing something somewhere about what is actually happening here. Was there a regulation, and this is our response to it?
No, I just...
I mean, something somewhere.
I just thought a few months ago that there should be some additions, some sections in the regs to back up the actual review criteria, you know, some of the other ones for parking, for land state things.
Our, they came from...
From our land use regs, yep.
Sorry to interrupt, but it may be helpful to specify which memo we're talking about. I don't know if you could share it on the screen or if anyone could...
Yeah, so it's in the other proposed changes in the land use regs folder, the folder titled that, and then it's the staff review of green zoning.
Okay.
But maybe to give a little context, maybe it's not exactly context, but like a corollary, you know, we currently have put burdens on development for, you know, electric car charging. That's a requirement in some places. Like, how did that come about, Sue and Steve? Was it before we felt like we were in a housing crisis and we could...
It was...
...integrate that sort of burden without being such a detriment to development?
Well, it doesn't apply to single-family homes. It applies to commercial buildings. So, yeah, I mean, it was, it has to do with parking and parking facilities, and so we felt like it was, it was something in the code, in the energy code or the, yeah, I think it's the state energy codes, and just felt it was land use related.
Yeah. Yeah, see, that's exactly how I felt about solar-ready zones on non-single-family houses. But, yeah, but I understand that if you keep adding things, at some point, then it becomes too much.
Now, didn't we add that with that, I remember, oh, God, like maybe last summer we mentioned about, you know, new homes having that in there to the EVs in the garage and stuff. We mentioned that also.
It's, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, Gary. It's a pretty standard permit condition that the zoning administrator puts on the permits, and so you might see it in the development review board decisions as well, particularly because in our land use regs, it's, I think, after you have 40 parking spaces, you have to provide one per 20 EVs.
I remember, okay.
I'll also flag, I know it's been a while, I think maybe last summer, maybe July, we had had a discussion of that big spreadsheet of potential cost-adding or barriers to housing production within the current land use regs. And certainly that was something I had flagged as another...
All right.
I do believe it's likely a, something that adds costs, and that's not to say that that can't be justifiable depending on the trade-off. It's a value judgment. But I think, you know, it's, we are currently doing that. It's currently a non-zero addition of costs, and we're currently not seeing very much housing developed, so, you know, to take the flip side of your...
It's not going to help. We at least know it's not going to help to add another.
Sure, yes, I think.
Another burden, yep. I don't, yeah, I don't want to, you know, spend too much time on this unless there was, you know, some sort of exuberant support, but Steph brings up some really good points, and I think we can move on to the next thing and...
I just want to add, before we do, I wanted to echo an appreciation for there being lots of different ways to think about renewables and to a certain extent, you know, thinking about our housing on a larger scale beyond a single-family home is a huge part of what we are here for, right? To remember that any individual house does not exist in a vacuum, and that each house that is constructed while providing shelter to somebody also has an impact within the bigger system. So I recognize the challenges of trying to zone it, and I also think it is important to keep in mind that by considering on a larger scale rather than on an individual unit or even building process, we're going to be more successful. So I don't have a direct response to this, but I think it's important to keep in mind that the zoning and the individual buildings are connected to each other, it's not one or the other.
So I guess I'll just say, you know, after we do this round of land use regs revision, that feels like a good, you know, launching point to then focus on new things, maybe beyond housing. And Steph and I have talked about that a little bit, like the historic regs and other things. So, you know, if people want to think about just all sorts of different things, including energy and climate, and maybe review that plan that I put in the Plans and Zoning Studies folder and whatever else they may find, and let us know what they want to focus on, if it's this or not, then we'll put together a plan for the next chapter of the planning commission. But unless anyone has anything burning, let's move on to the accessory commercial units.
I just wanted to point out Sarah joined the meeting.
Oh, great. Welcome, Sarah. So we're moving on to the accessory commercial units, and so based on our input, commissioner's input from last meeting, Steph created, not a mock-up, but a draft of what a section added to land use regs for accessory commercial units could look like. I guess we can get that up on screen, and hopefully everybody saw it, so we can focus on the necessary final points. Final points to address?
I just want to say, because I'm sharing my screen, Dan and Sarah and anybody else on Zoom, I can't necessarily see you, so we'll just have to...
Yeah, please, yeah.
...manage that, just unmute yourself and join the conversation. If that's all right with you, Tom?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, you're not sharing correctly.
I'm not sharing?
You are not sharing.
I'm not sharing, sorry.
If you just share screen, like that, that's currently selected, you should be able to have them over top, visible. If you just share it the way it is selected over screen, or the top-left option, where it just says screen, where everybody's faces are, if you just share screen in that way.
Oh, okay, now I can see you.
Yeah, so once again, just a little brief point. The ACUs, you know, just apply to the residential neighborhood, whereas the similar category, we already have home business, applies to all districts where there's a home, I believe. And, I mean, beyond that, I just have a couple of points or questions, but I know to finalize this section, if we do decide to incorporate it, Sue, I mean, Sue or Steve, you probably have some, some main points to bring up or some questions for us?
I'm going to turn to over Steve.
And vice versa.
Yeah, and I'll say as well that it doesn't have to be limited to just the residential neighborhood, but I think that was seemingly the general consensus, at least in the first or second sort of reading of this. But if there was any kind of misgiving about that, we could certainly make that change. This is a, I believe, third reading of the... This is a, I believe, third reading of, of the accessory commercial unit language. It's very similar to what you saw last time, because we were able to resolve virtually all of the decision points from that last version. So in this version, there is a list of primary use, or, excuse me, permitted use accessory commercial uses and conditional use accessory commercial uses. That was something that was requested of staff, so that is in the third section where it says use standards. But certainly this could be made to include a more visually obvious table, the way that we do it in some of our other sections before it's finalized. And in, in addition to that, I did drop the square footage of it from 900 to 500 as a result of us realizing in the office that 900 square feet is a lot bigger than we were really thinking it was. But certainly, the last version of this that, that y'all saw had 900 square feet, so we can always revert to that, but that might be larger than some of your GI Bill era houses. So I think if there's not some sort of language similar to the ADU regulation that we currently have, where 30% or 900 square feet, whichever is, oh, actually, we have whichever is greater, and clearly subordinate to the primary structure, if, if that language was added, I think that would probably be less of a concern, but, yeah, if you were to have an 800-square-foot house with a 900-square-foot storefront, that doesn't seem like it's particularly keeping with the vision that, that we had been working through. So the real final decision point, other than those minor changes, is that if this was to be adopted, the place that it sort of sits in that general spectrum between home occupation, which is of course statutory exempt, so that just sort of stays put there, but it serves as a lower bound, and then the existing home business category that, that Tom mentioned, as well as on the other end of it, the just primary use commercial type. Where this sits in that general spectrum and the way that we review it, there being a existing structure for a, something that we call a conditional use review, but is not nearly as, as broad for home businesses at the moment, which is something I mentioned on the, is this the third, yeah, the third page of the document? So I think it would be great to include that if this is something that we move forward with, rather than having the full conditional use review with the entire long narrative sections that I don't think would really pertain to most of the aspects of this kind of development. But we also could consider removing the home business type and having accessory commercial units fill up a broader range as the thing that sits between home occupations and primary use commercial. So I don't think that staff necessarily has a recommendation on that and would be happy to hear input on what the commission is, is thinking would be the best way to move forward with that.
Thanks. Hold on just a second, did Sarah leave or does it not show all the people in those two boxes?
She's still there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I just had my video off.
No, that's all right, it's just in the share screen mode from this, it's only showing two boxes that.
BCTV prefers that we don't share the, people that don't have their video on it messes up their thing in some way, so, just speak up, Sarah.
But Linda was gonna say something?
I'm just curious, if we were to adopt this and have this spectrum of different possibilities, how would somebody who's interested in starting a small business that has a home-based component to it, how would they go about figuring out which one is the correct fit or the best fit for what they're trying to do? Where do they start? What would they see? How are they figuring out which path is the best?
I think the simplest way to do it is if we just have these two things sit sort of side by side with some overlapping abilities to, if you could be permitted under either one of them, where I don't think that's necessarily a problem if we do it that way, just leaving the home business as it is and adding this additional pathway, because I mentioned on the third page as well, but just paraphrase, that it's, it's probably a good thing to have some redundancies where we are being permissive in our land use regs, because then if something that is perfectly acceptable or even, you know, enjoyable is proposed, that's very innovative, but doesn't really fit what we had actually structured our existing pathways to be able to approve, we might have to, we might not be able to permit something that is otherwise completely reasonable. But I think in that hypothetical, staff would probably just answer the phone or the email and say, "We believe that this pathway would be the more beneficial one for you." And I think generally speaking, the path of least resistance that's more broadly permissive is probably the one that we would suggest, like if you could get a accessory commercial unit, you'd probably want that over the home business, but you may not.
So, so if somebody picks up the phone, they're able to talk with somebody from planning and determine what the best path is, if somebody was to be researching on their own prior to making a phone call, what would they see? Where would they see it? And how would they navigate it?
They would only see it right now in our, in the land use regulations if they opened it. I mean, we could have some fact sheets or, or something like that that were designed as information on the website.
They wouldn't be applying online anyway necessarily. So when you say these things sit together, they might literally be packets sitting next to each other here that somebody would come and pick up and fill out.
There are all the zoning permit, et cetera, forms on the building zoning webpage.
Okay, yeah. You could, so we've talked a lot about in the office, so there's home occupation, which is statutory, anybody can do that. That might be your account that doesn't, you know, they maybe do run books for people, they don't have anybody come into their house, you know, that you can just do, you're permitted to do, we have to keep that in because that's enabled by statute. The home business has specifically been written in a way that doesn't really allow kind of the high-intensity commercial stuff. You couldn't, you couldn't run a bakery out of there, because conceivably there'd be too much traffic. So it's, it's a little bit more limited, you probably could run a salon, you know, a seat or two, you could have a couple of people that are not a member of your household, you know, working there, so they might come to the site. So there's that kind of level. And then the accessory commercial unit in our mind kind of is those commercial uses maybe that are more intense. At the last meeting, you had asked us to kind of think about what might be permitted, what might be a conditional use. There's another way you could think of it is where we could get the home business to a place where that was permitted and then really just leaving the commercial uses to all be conditional uses. I mean, that would provide further separation between the three pathways. And I just wanna say one other thing about this, you know, this is not anything we've done, we've done any public outreach on, so it would really be my recommendation if we're gonna move forward with something like this, before we start public hearings, we, we get some, you know, we have a meeting, we, we discuss this with the public, we get it out there in the town newsletter, maybe through the newspaper, because I do think, you know, while we all seem interested in having small-scale commercial uses in, in the neighborhoods, we might hear something different from, from people in the community. So I think that we should have everything lined up before we move anything forward.
And that's part of the reason I'm curious about kind of the user experience is that I'm curious about how people would learn about this and what it is and how it fits into the bigger picture, because if we go through passing it, but people can't understand what it is, it doesn't particularly help us move forward with the goals. So I'm kind of curious about some of those tangibles.
Yeah, I, I think that's a valid way to, you know, it's, it's definitely an issue with a whole number of things that we have in our land use regulations that aren't really, it's the way that they would find this, other than like Tom was saying, as a available PDF of some questions about it, which would presume they knew to look for that in the first place. They would probably encounter this in section 305 of their land use regs, which is a lot of scrolling, and then they would encounter this block of text. But it also requires them to understand how that slots into several other pieces of the zoning regulations, and that's why I guess we have the, the sorcerers of this dargard able to answer the phone during the daytime. But I think we have discussed definitely wanting to make, you know, one-pagers and infographics or whatnot on a, a number of these topics, so that there could be a more self-service aspect. And I think that that's often a problem with some of our regulations that are perfectly able to work, to do exactly or nearly exactly what we're hoping for in, in terms of our goals, but if it's not made explicitly clear on the quickest of skimming or even a, you know, control-off search from somebody ahead of town who's thinking about maybe developing a site here and doesn't immediately find something that suggests that would be an easy and endless experience, they might decide not to apply. And we're not gonna have data on that because it's a application that doesn't come in, but I think it's definitely, it adds friction when we have sort of opaque.
Well, it's curious too, I think it's an interesting point because what people are gonna go searching for and what, you know, average people who don't speak the language we do are gonna go searching for, it's much more likely they're gonna look for home business than that they're gonna look for accessory commercial unit, right? They wouldn't know to look for it, just like people don't know to look for ADU, they aren't familiar with, I mean, more than used to be, but they're not familiar with that term, so they're gonna look for like granny flat, in the apartment, or, you know, that sort of thing, so. I'm also curious in terms of the square footage, on the one hand, I'm a big fan of small spaces, and on the other hand, I imagine there are some businesses that'd be particularly tricky to run out of a space so small. So I think that the, the size will constrain the activities, and I think that's probably not a bad thing because of the scale we're trying to achieve here. But I think the part that caught my eye this time that I don't recall from last time was the standalone structures being maximum of 200 square feet. Is that, am I reading that correctly? It's number four under dimensional standards?
That is something that I can certainly rewrite so that it doesn't give that impression. That is just saying with a quote of the category that we've got in our accessory structure dimensional standards right now, it's saying that the, in that table, under that particular line, the specific structure dimensional standards that are being applied to that will be the same that are applied to this.
Even though this can be up to 500 square feet instead of 200?
Yes.
I see, okay.
That was just an intent to have the verbatim category, but I think we could also just put comma accessory commercial unit in that table 3-1, and then not have to have that reference, that I can absolutely see how that would be confusing.
I think 200 is too small to really be viable, so I think that would be helpful.
Right, yeah, the, the 200, I think, is meant for like a garden shed, and so that, that was just the closest structure materially to what this would kind of be. But it's also entirely possible for us to add a additional line to that table and add specific dimensional standards of height and setback to this particular structure type, if there was any reason that that was preferred.
I think that might make sense as long as there isn't anything else in the same category, right? If, if we don't suddenly want sheds to be 500 square feet, I think it makes sense to keep them, keep them separated.
So I think the, the only thing it's actually referring to is that it can be in the rear setback or the side setback, and that it is able to have five-foot setbacks or if the underlying standard in the basic district is more generous, it can do that. And then 15 feet in height. So those are the two things that are being applied there, but we could either add the ACU specifically to that, or we could add a new line if there was any reason to think that it should have different standards, or potentially it could have the same standards as its own line, I'm not sure if that's good practice, but.
It is interesting to think about, though, we're saying sheds or workshops, artists' studios can be a max of 200 square feet and be five feet from the side and rear, and then in comes the accessory commercial unit, which is, could be more intense, and we're saying it can be 500 feet and five feet, so it is a little, there's something quite equal about that.
Well, I might, I obviously need to spend more time curled up with the code, but are we restricting right now workshops to 200 square feet?
No, we're not restricting them to 200 square feet. If they're 200 square feet or less, they can be five feet, otherwise they have to meet the regular setback.
I see, that makes sense.
And I think, you know, this is an area where if you take it to the public before public hearings, like we figure out, well, is, is the community interested in this? And therefore five feet is acceptable? Or are we gonna hear, you know, some concerns about it, in which case we wanna say, let's go with the regular setback.
Right. I will point out, though, that that will be a difference of one foot when we presumably approve of the changes that Brenda has introduced. So it's possibly just not worth even. Applying that direct standard that's difference, but, that's different, I mean, it would give you a little bit more of your yard space to be able to potentially make one of these fit, whereas otherwise it wouldn't. But I think the, the potential for this to just be zoned out of existence, out of a overabundance of caution, is, is a lot lower when we won't have 25-foot combined-side setbacks anymore in the area. So that's, I don't think I was thinking of the six feet versus five feet, I think I was still thinking through the.
But those notes at the bottom of that accessory use table for those two quotes, don't they say they can encroach three feet into this setback and eight feet into the setback? We're gonna have to revise those too, potentially.
Not for, not for this particular thing, those notes go with specific, so overhangs, eaves, bays, that kind of thing.
I think Tom was asking broadly about the.
Three, okay, you're talking about three.
Change to the.
Oh, did you talk about five?
Wholesale, that might be.
Oh, if you're talking wholesale.
Just like eight feet in, oh, oh, yeah, the eight-feet one is for a different, a different quote from that figure 3-1?
The three and the eight have to do with the front setback, so now I think there.
It has, it, it does call out that if it's an attached ACU, that it could be regulated with the standards for that, you know, overhangs, eaves, and et cetera. So the, the three feet in front, into the front setback, I think that's the next, no, the previous one, number three. previous one, number three.
Yeah.
I know that there was some concern with having the commercial units detached versions be allowable within the front setback.
And then in number two, you say the building footprint of the ACU, the footprint of the ACU may not be the building footprint? I wonder if there is an opportunity to clarify language there, so that people don't believe it can only happen in a building that's 500 square feet? Maybe I'm just being too picky on that one, but maybe we just strike the word building and just say the footprint of the ACU?
Yeah.
Or I may look into just any potential interesting creative interpretations versus the difference of saying if the ACU is detached, if the building footprint, et cetera, and then having a second clause that says, or 500 square feet of floor area within a larger structure.
Yeah, we can include that.
Yeah, it may not make a difference, but I'm sure we'll wrap our brains around it.
Okay. So in terms of what you need from us, then, in terms of decision points, it sounds like the leaning at the moment is to move forward with this, try it, see if people are applying under it, and we could always reevaluate later the relationship between this and home occupation and home business. But we're curious to see whether there's interest in this at all.
Here. Well, did you, was that something you wanted addressed? By the member of the public or by staff? You want to address?
May I just, an encouragement of the proposal, I think it's a great idea. Some touchpoints that the public might be highly sensitive to are not immediately addressed in this memo, lighted signs perhaps would be a point of aggravation in residential neighborhoods. And acknowledgement that it wouldn't be the same parking as people parking overnight. And I think there'd be a great fear about these things turning into Airbnb, you know, below-the-radar Airbnb structures. So explicit prohibitions against either a bathroom or a kitchen, you can have one, not the other, to guard against those kind of uses. These three things might help that kind of regulator, or that kind of ACU work its way into acceptance with the public, while still creating a series of barriers to disruptive commercial experiences in the neighborhood.
Interesting the idea of not including a bathroom, because again, we get into this piece of like, what would commercial code require? And commercial code would require that there be a bathroom for employees to use. If it's a home-based business and it's a homeowner that can run into their own bathroom, it's not a big deal, but.
Yeah, it is, I was wondering that too.
I would recommend you can have a kitchen or a bathroom, your choice. If you're running a bakery, then the kitchen fixture would be required, but you'd be a sole proprietor, and you could use your own restroom in your home. But if you're running a salon, you want to protect against kitchen uses for that salon once it fails to get turned into a dwelling unit.
Well, as we seem to be talking about frequently, and as we'll bring up later with SROs, and, you know, we seem to be getting away or recognizing that we shouldn't be becoming so much a land use reg that has building code elements. And that seems to me like something that we should just leave for the building code to address.
Do you want to be grandfathered in? A lot of places are already grandfathered in, so.
To the other two ideas that you had brought up, I think we should explicitly call out the sign regulations that would already apply, that would preclude internally eliminated signs. But we do also have language that you can not create any new additional parking for these units, so as to make them have to be sort of neighborhood scale. You could use any existing on-street parking, unless it's this time of year and this time of night.
No.
Later than that.
We can park on the street right now.
Oh, now you can't.
Or you could use your lawfully existing driveway if you're a one or two-family home, but.
Why did you set that? Why did you say for one and two-family instead of more?
That's in our current regulations, that has a number of existing exemptions, where that counts as the parking area and is otherwise not. We would otherwise apply our existing parking minimums, which are calculated on number of parking stalls, minimum size, and then a whole bunch of other things. But the two-family and one-family area of residential density is, I think it's because of state statute, the protection towards those things, one and two, that they are exempt from site plan review at the municipal level. But at present, we are allowing that far less intrusive parking style satisfy our regulations, but that's otherwise not the case. So I'm looking for this and not really make use of existing parking lots, and I think that would kind of be a rarity in the RN anyhow. But I mean, this could be rerouted, so that it doesn't preclude that type of development. It just seems like it would be a little bit different in its relationship to the neighborhood if it was sort of accessing a large parking lot.
Yeah, perhaps, I don't, I'm not advocating one way or the other, I just, I just, you know, couldn't imagine why. I mean, maybe because in one or two-family residences, there's more, the effect on the parking is more just contains to most likely the owner and their close other households, if it's a duplex, whereas if it's larger, then it's affecting good or bad multiple units, right?
Well, you know, I would agree that the logic that you're starting to work on sounds good to me, but I think we've got a gag order on that.
Okay. Well, we're not finalizing this now. One thing I wanted to jump in and add, though, when Linda, you were addressing like, how would we trial this, or how would we roll it out? And then Seth, before that was saying it would be good, and they advised that we don't just put this in the land use regs and roll it into public hearing. And then you were also saying that it'd be good, and you liked the idea, Seth, you're saying this, I think, of having an info sheet or something on the webpage. That sort of info sheet or whatever could pair nicely with presenting something to the public. Unless you don't want to work on much of an info sheet before we actually see if we're going to go forward with this, after hearing from the public. But we're going to have to have something presented to the public, instead of just, instead of just this form in our words, right? Because they need to see what it looks like.
Yes.
And I mean, Steve, you made that a very visual PowerPoint before, so.
I'm happy to give it a try.
Yeah, I mean, should we, definitely want to hear from people that we haven't, if they have anything to say, but.
Dan had a hand up at some point.
And we're not going to take an official vote, but I just want to know if we want to continue moving forward with this.
Be continued?
To be continued in what sort of way?
I have some additional questions, I didn't want to continue the conversation due constraints with other topics on the agenda, so I think maybe we should continue this to a later day, if possible, if it's within the scope of.
You want to continue it in the form it's in, or maybe move it along to some sort of talk about a public presentation or gain a public input?
Well, I guess with the final topic, any questions that we may have then presented to the public? I had a few questions I wanted to add that I think we're missing, but I don't want to, you know, I think I could just send it to you, or just we can either, whichever anyone chooses the best fit, how we can move forward.
I think if we want to, you know, look at this as part of when we put all the other zoning land use amendments forward, I think it'd be nice to have them on the table, but I'll let Tom manage the meeting, how, you know, how do we want to get that? Because I think that, you know, we'll want to bring this back to you in March, and then, you know, maybe later in March have, have some sort of, be ready to put some information out to the public and.
Oh, that sounds great.
So.
Personally, I like that.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we don't have a whole lot of time to, you know, take five, you know, a couple more meetings on this.
Right.
Seems to me that if you've got questions directly relevant to this, we're all here, and maybe we should hear what they are, if that's okay.
Well, I say because it's time constraining, and there's some things I had written down, I didn't bring it with me, leaving work, so I would rather have it on the.
We don't have enough time for you to drive home and get it.
Yeah.
I agree with you, not enough time.
So in all fairness to the team and to.
All right.
I am happy to, you know, you can send them to us, we could share them with.
Sure, I could just do that, either take a picture, just send it, I could add a few queries, but I, yeah, I kind of ran out quick.
I was just going to add a quick thing, that lowercase Roman numeral number five, or V, I think it should directly address, or reference three. It just says the above standards, three-foot encroachment, and people looking at this will be like, oh, I don't see three-foot mentioned anywhere, so, it's just a little thing.
I'm also curious, because it's easier to change these things now than when they're finalized. What the reason is that professional services ended up in the conditional or the reviewed version, as opposed to being in the first block?
When we sort of hashed that out, just discussing straight from the back of these regulations, where there's the, I think it's LCBS, I always accidentally say LCBO, which I think is the liquor store monopoly in Ontario. But anyways, I think it's LCBS. Those are standardized definitions for land uses that are fairly specific, but broad enough that you can reference those, so that there's the standardization across communities. So we looked at those, and we decided which of these were more or less neighborhood scale and public-facing in their interaction with the space. Which one of these would feel like it was really in the vision of that small third space creating a sort of.
Adds vibrancy and.
Neighborhood focus. And so, given that that LCBS standard for the specific professional services, I believe, says that it's primarily a sort of business-to-business type commercial transaction, I think it's not impossible to think that that sort of thing would be able to be a community-focused.
So it's not so much about disrupting neighbors as it is about it doesn't necessarily achieve the sorts of aims that this was created for?
Right.
Got it.
And I would actually argue that a bunch of those, I mean, we kicked this around in the office, some of those things actually would fall under our existing home business. So this gets, so like professional services, information services, potentially publishing, that one could go either way. I mean, a lot of those could be permitted as a home business right now. So we could even pull that out and just leave the more kind of commercial as part of the ACU.
Thank you.
Yeah, this would allow for them to be in a detached structure.
What could be a detached individual business?
Yeah, I think we can, we can add a sentence, making that additionally clear, too. I know it says that you can be in any structure, yeah, on the lot, but inspired by your comments earlier, I think if we were to put a sentence right at the beginning of our home business saying that it could be, just because it says home, it could also be in your shed, or something like that, that might ease some of the friction of folks trying to understand this.
Thanks, Rick.
So unless there is objections or concerns, I think Sue laid out a little pathway there, which sounds good, at least personally to me, about refining this a bit more, and then seeing it again in a month or two.
Yeah, if there are any specific ones listed as permitted or as conditional or not listed, that there was any difference of feeling about whether that was being seen maybe with too much caution or not enough, then certainly that would be helpful to hear about as well.
I'll just say, if the public doesn't know how miscellaneous manufacturing is defined in our regs, that may, that may make them raise their eyebrows, but it just means like, wow, it's just, it's just like a little artisan, it's artisan-level work. It's not, it's not a thing that I would use the word manufacturing for, but so it is defined by the LCBS code, so.
Thanks.
Yeah. We have the suite of miscellaneous staff recommendations, that's all in one document, except the small accessory structure exemption. Well, that didn't come from staff, that came from me. But since that kind of came later, I added confusion to it, we'll take that at the end of this, if we can get to it before 7:25, 7:30. But anyways, yeah, there's the document with the table in the beginning, and then all the sections of land use regs, draft, revised. So obviously, you know, if we go through these and talk about each one in detail, it's going to be, it's going to take a long time, so. It's been in the folder for a few days during the, maybe we can hit them quickly, led by Sue or Steve.
Yeah, do you want to.
People will just raise, raise concerns.
Go through it, or do you want to just, yeah, do you want to speak to them?
Absolutely needed questions as they come? Yeah, could you?
Oh, what?
Oh, go through it.
Go through them quickly?
Yeah, because all of these things aren't things that we've talked about very much before.
Right.
The next agenda item at 7:25, but the bylaw modernization grant, that's pretty much all things that Brandy has presented to us before. But these are new things, I don't think any of them are real, real heavy hitters.
So I can run through them, and you can just interrupt if you have questions or concerns.
Raise your hand.
So, does it make sense for me to put them on screen?
Yeah, for the public, there you go.
My screen's so small.
Yeah.
I did it the wrong way. Sorry, for some reason I've gotten rusty at screen sharing.
We hit that blue box again.
All right. So our first proposal has to do with accessory dwelling unit. Right now, we specify that it has to be an efficiency or one-bedroom apartment, and we're recommending that we don't put any, you know, number of bedrooms on it. You know, there are size restrictions on the ADU, so, you know, what the makeup of the bedroom situation is, we don't really care about. So that is the first one. Thumbs up from several people. In the urban center zoning district, so one thing we've been talking about is, you know, there's, there seems to be a little less demand for retail and for office space, and currently, we don't allow any ground-floor apartments within 30 feet in our urban center. And don't forget, that, that district basically goes from kind of generally the courthouse, it takes into account Harris Street, it goes all the way down to kind of Bridge Street, it has parts of flat in Elliot Street. And, you know, we know that some of the mixed-use buildings in town, like the Snow Block, have, and some others, kind of struggled to find commercial uses on the first floor, and so sometimes it's an office space, sometimes it ends up being a community room. And so what we're recommending here is that there are some character areas in the downtown that, you know, maybe could have first-floor residential, there'd be nothing wrong with that, you see that all over cities. And so kind of, we call this the Wells Fountain area, like this part of Main Street, with the municipal center and Harris Street and some others. So the recommendation here is that you would not be able to have first-floor residential within 30 feet of the public street or sidewalk, in between Grove Street and Canal Street. So pretty much kind of the main block buildings as you go down, down Main Street. And then also, if there's an existing storefront. And then also if there is an existing storefront, so this would capture some of Flat Street, some of Elliot Street. If there's an existing storefront, then that could be converted into residential. Thirty feet back from it, you could have residential.
How is an existing storefront defined? Do you mean how it's used or how it's built?
How it's built.
But then what if they renovate it to not look like a storefront?
We're saying they can't do that. If it's a storefront, it's a storefront.
So the the build that you would have to be a whole new building without a storefront on the first floor in order to.
Right.
Okay.
So for example, Harris, the Harris parking lot. If that was to be converted into residential, you could have potentially have residential on the first floor. Or you could maybe have parking, because that's another change that's proposed. You could have parking underneath and then residential above.
Yeah, before you clarified that for me and maybe slightly, I still am a little concerned of like losing the commercial aspect of maybe the closer part of Elliot or around Harmony Lot, but they're all existing storefronts.
Storefronts.
I think it wouldn't be too difficult to add a second clause that just says or Elliot Street between.
Yeah.
Main Street and Grove. Is it? No. Link place? No.
No, it's Church Street.
Church Street, yeah.
But your point, I I had listed the closer part of Flat Street, but then I with your example, it starts making me think, oh, yeah, there is some challenges to commercial and some multi-year vacancies down there, so.
Well.
At least lately. But Harmony Town Square, consider adding that as well.
Harmony Town.
Oops, I called it that. I mean Harmony Harmony Parking Lot. But yeah, I feel like, I mean, those are really in the heart and they're really dense. I feel like those areas would be potentially a shame to kind of be hollowed out as the commercial center and turned more residential. That's my take. Gary?
Well, you and I did our street survey that time for size. I remember looking down and I know that from latches down, there are those storefronts that are there. Well, the one, what is it? Harmony Parking Lot? The parking garage itself. But did we mention anything about down the road, maybe any conversion in that area?
In the Harmony Lot?
Yeah.
Uh, that was in the downtown plan to kind of look at making that more park-like.
Oh, it was park-like, okay.
Yeah, not not infill housing there.
I know the one they built next behind Emerson, that new building there, but I believe there's another building right back next to Harmony Parking Lot. They are building something and then that old business, that other storefront that was there, are they? The one next to it, wouldn't you see?
Are you talking about the transportation center?
Yes.
And the the old, it's called the Duette Building?
That's the one.
Yes, that is going to have fifteen, I think fifteen units of housing and then like a co-working space on the first floor. That's cool.
So conversions like that, I guess where you're talking about Tom, the buildings like that, add to storefronts themselves, which.
Well, yeah, with this change, if if we go forward with this after public hearings and the select boards and, you know, everything, then then this would allow the whole first floor of the Duette Building rebuilt to be residential potentially if they wanted.
Well, it's a storefront on the. That's a storefront to me.
Well, because they're retaining it as a storefront, right?
Well, no, because it's it's always been a storefront, though.
Bad.
Well, not always. It's most recent use. It's got the plate glass windows up front. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, that's my confusion there.
Am I correct?
Sue.
Yeah, Dan.
Uh, sorry, I just feel like I might not be visible on the screen just with the hand and everything.
Yeah, feel free to yell.
I don't know. So I'm sorry to ask you to rewind a little bit, but Sue, could you, I know this is completely off topic, but if we're at a good pausing point. With the ADU mention that you had earlier about one bedroom or studio.
Yep.
Did we did we rewind to that at some point? It doesn't have to be right now, but could we go back to that at some point?
Sure.
Might as well do it now while you have the you have the.
Well, I mean, I I, yeah, I just don't know that it's, you know. I think the idea of an accessory dwelling unit is that it is an accessory, so there should at least be some limit on the size. And I'm not sure if deleting the one bedroom or studio kind of indicates that there's no limit on the size. That was kind of my concern and and essentially that it shouldn't be larger than the primary building, right? Like if.
We should have a floor size limit and it it has a second way of being met that's to make it a little more generous, but we have nine hundred square feet or thirty percent the size of the primary structure, whichever one is more.
So it's so it's footprint. It's a footprint limit, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what we would be doing by eliminating that sort of prescriptiveness on what's happening inside is allowing for perhaps two small bedrooms in an ADU instead of, you know, sort of this blunt tool of insisting that it be, say, a nine hundred square foot, one bedroom apartment. I believe that's what I currently live in and I'd definitely live in less if I could. It's a really big one bedroom apartment and I understand it, so.
For sure.
Especially with a studio, I think it it would be maybe a wasted space that could otherwise squeeze out a little more housing.
Okay. I guess my other thought about that is that I think an ADU is defined by the fact that it has a kitchen. It can have as many bathrooms as you want or whatever, but is that kind of is that is that in there already or?
It is, yeah. Yeah, it's in a different part of the the regulations.
Well, it's just the next page, but it's chopped off.
Yeah, that's true.
Gotcha. Okay, so as long as that's still in there, I'm I'm good with that. Okay, thanks.
So back to the residential on first floor, I think.
So am I correct in understanding that most of the places that we think of as the urban center already have storefronts and would be not allowed to have residential on the first floor, but any places that are within this urban center area that are not storefronted on the first floor could have residential if this it goes through.
And I'm trying to find you a map because places like the Shriners Building are in the urban center and, you know, having a requirement. So they have a large parking lot, right? If you could build something there or even repurpose the Shriners Building, right? Having a requirement that they're being commercial on the first floor doesn't make a lot of sense. Same with something like, I think St. Bridget's Church, I think, not not St. Bridget's, the the Community Kitchen over there.
Loaves of Fishes.
Loaves of Fishes, thank you. I think that is also in the urban center, so, you know.
Not left.
Thank you.
I was trying to say it in between words.
Oh, right.
For for clarity's sake, it it is allowed under our current regulations to have residential on the first floor if it's more than thirty feet from the street front. But that does seem like a pretty broad, large area. And I think that would even be the case with our changed language proposed that in an existing storefront building, you could still have residential as it's thirty feet back. But, you know, maybe the thirty feet is a bit overbroad.
Yeah, so it goes up Canal Street a little bit to Elm Street. Yeah.
So it seems like it wouldn't actually impact a lot of parcels, but those that did have the ability to be residential could be. Yes.
Yeah, I think there's a lot more infill space in the urban center than anybody realizes, including myself. So I think we intend to try to map that out to really make it clear.
There's a lot of large parking lots in this part of downtown, the Harris Lot, TD Bank Building, a couple of others, other buildings. There's a lot of one-story buildings down Harris Street, you know, maybe they could have if they ever converted, so.
Are we good with this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
For now.
Move on to the next one.
The next one is.
The urban center use table.
Oh, yes. In this one, we're proposing to make surface parking a conditional use. So pretty much surface parking can, well, you can't you can't create new surface parking that the municipality could to kind of serve the downtown district, or like we mentioned before, you could have a pedestal building. So if somebody was redeveloping, they could have parking on the ground floor level and then a building above. So we just thought a conditional use because we don't really want to be encouraging new parking lots. Makes makes a lot more sense. And then also, single-family detached housing would be removed from the district, so it would have to be multi-unit housing or townhomes. It didn't really seem to fit the goals of what we wanted for downtown, and it's not efficient way to develop the land in downtown. And malls or shopping centers, removing that as a use.
So if there's any burning questions or concerns, voice them. If not, at least to me, all that sounds reasonable and good, but that's just one person's take. So we can move on to the next one unless I hear something. Okay.
The next one, this is probably a minor change, but it's just the way that we interpret it. So it has to do with parking in the urban center. And so we can approve at grade or below bright parking located within or under a building, provided that it is screened from view at the front property line. And we didn't really think that it was reasonable to think that it would be totally screened. You know, it could be. So it's just kind of a minor change to basically, you know, make more sense the time that I that I wrote this. That, you know, the parking just has to have some screening. It doesn't have to be screened from view. This one's a little messy.
Oh, I was gonna say screen. I first interpreted that that mean that need to be screened on all four sides entirely. I I viewed that as more restrictive.
You you view this as more restrictive?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I think we need to fix this one up.
Okay.
I believe that was more or less the intention. Although I guess I I'm picturing many of the Sunbelt cities or even College Station, Texas. They're just being these ubiquitous buildings with with the pedestal parking with a semi-transparent or semi-opaque, I guess, screening around them so that it's less visually intrusive and some sort of semi-transparent gate that can be raised and lowered, rather than saying that there needs to be like full opacity around. But I think it definitely, I don't think had been discussed in any way that we would be saying, let's just allow for the dingbat buildings that are on stilts.
Let me take this one back, and I know this was a concern that Brian had raised, and I'm not sure that I adequately addressed the issue that he was talking about, and it wasn't necessarily an attempt to make it more restrictive. So.
Okay.
I'll bring that back in March. I'll see. The next has to do with village center uses. We've talked a lot here, not a lot, but we've talked about bar drinking places as, you know, some place that might be desirable in a walking distance, especially in a village. So moving that into permitted uses. And then also malls or shopping centers not being appropriate in West Brattleboro Village. I don't see anything there. Service Center. I don't see anything on this page, so I'm sorry I gave you an extra page on the service center. But in the uses, we wanted to add single family attached to a permitted use because really that's how, one of the ways you go about getting townhomes. So you wouldn't, you would definitely have at least, well, you'd have three in order to to get there, so. So we thought, you know, three townhomes, three plus townhomes would be okay, would should be a permitted use.
Right, and I think the thinking on our part was that the single family piece is pretty misleading in terms of how the form actually exists in space, so it could well be identical to, you know, an A unit or more building that we would see permissible under our infill overlay, not in this zone, but but in general. So this could look a lot more like missing middle in everything but the tenure aspect. And so that doesn't really feel like it's a, it it's certainly not a single family type in the way that a detached home is. So I think that was part of it, something that was missed when it was put in conditional earlier.
About the single family attached dwelling, is that, I have no concerns with putting it there really, except that it made me wonder is, would a two-family attached? Would two single-family attached dwellings be a loophole to get a duplex?
No.
So duplex is in conditional, but single-family attached dwelling is in permitted, but what if you only have two single-family attached dwellings? I know a duplex can be one above the other and.
Yeah.
But if your duplex is side by side.
Duplex is side by side.
That's my little.
We have a special definition for duplex.
I think the way we would expect it to go down is that that would be considered duplex or and warned like that by the administrative officer, which would send it to the DRB and.
Yeah, and the person could take you to court maybe if they.
Yeah, they could appeal the decision that it was two single-family attached dwellings. So we could try to tighten that up if there is a potential, but.
If it seems rare that that would happen. It was just a thought I had.
Aren't detached dwellings typically, they own the land underneath them?
Yes.
Okay.
It doesn't require that as far as our regs.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay.
But it does also allow for that explicitly.
Okay.
Oh, you were saying two twenty?
No, we're on two twenty now.
Well, I'm missing it out here.
Oh.
Two ten, we're on figured two ten.
No, it's two twenty.
Page two twenty.
Yeah, it's not in here.
Well, it's up here.
Okay, all right. Not to say I was trying to follow.
Sorry.
That's fine. Always made.
And then we're also proposing that a couple of uses that don't seem to be good uses of land in the service center be removed. That includes heavy construction business, an industrial park, mini warehouses, stable or equine facility or a kennel. So we would like to remove them from conditional use.
I have a thought and an observation. With the no heavy construction business, that means that there's no other, there's no other district where it's allowed.
Industrial district.
I thought I looked.
Well, it should be in the industrials district, but we haven't.
And industrial parks are conditional in the neighborhood center, and yet they're being removed from this. That seems a little.
Almost certainly be getting to that if I am not mistaken.
To the neighborhood center.
Um, I'm not sure if we touched it in the neighborhood center, to be honest.
Yeah, I think.
But you're right, it is in there.
We were intending to more or less move past having industrial park as a standalone use, if I'm not mistaken. Because that and the mall and shopping center both, while they are LCBS uses that we have and they're used widely. It seems like it's presuming a type of scale rather than an actual use. It's sort of talking about a built form, a clustering of something that we would already be able to regulate as a single standalone use. So unless it was to be reformed as a PUD, and I don't know how much we really care to have a mall or shopping center PUD in 2023. That and the industrial park where we've already got all of these for various industrial uses that could be approved on their own. I think that's, I don't want to put words in the rest of staff's mouth, but I feel like that's the gist of why we were wanting to strike basement of all the districts.
So, Tom, construction-related business is allowed in the industrial, and I just don't know if we have a difference between those two definitions.
Heavy construction business was allowed in RB, but since we very likely will be striking that, then I don't know if we, it might not be good to not allow something anywhere in town. anywhere in town, unless we want to just give it to Hindsdale and Chester.
Well, I would say it falls under construction-related business, so it's allowed in the industrial.
But, it's two different, I mean, if you guys interpret it that way, when people come to you for a permit, that's one thing, but it's, I mean, you can see right above where it's striked out there, there's, I mean, it's a separate use. Sometimes construction-related business is with specialized machinery, I think sometimes it isn't.
Contractors that provide heavy, so this is heavy construction business. Contractors that provide heavy industrial or other non-building related construction services. Includes highway and street construction, bridge and tunnel construction, water, sewer, and pipeline construction, communication and transmission line construction, and construction of industrial structures. So what I would say is that that is, you're right, construction-related business has a different, contractors that build or demolish buildings or structures and perform additions, alterations, reconstruction, installation, repairs, and do not require specialized or heavy machinery. So what I would say is, when we talk about the service center, we are interested in having infill housing there, and I think heavy construction, you know, we can make room for it in the industrial zoning district, but I would not strike it from this one, because I don't think it's a compatible use with the vision for the service center. So I think we should at least get rid of this one, get, get rid of it here, we can put it in.
Add it to industrial park? Okay, great.
And maybe a future project can be to streamline these uses.
Mini warehouses, AKA self-storage facilities, are allowed in the use, in the urban center and village center, but with the provision that they are within a portion of a multi-use building?
Yeah.
Should we re-add that, keep that, prove that caveat, that provision here, for the service center, instead of just removing it entirely, or?
I need to think about that, because there is a way that a lot of mini-construction is...
Mini's...
Mini storage has been built in... So when we, when we talked about it in the urban center, and we talked about it in rural business, when we allotted there, so in rural business, there was a barn kind of structure that had been converted into it, so that was okay. And then in the urban center, I think at some point in the River Garden, they, at one point, had had some storage in the basement. This was before, I think, it had gotten renovated, and that made sense, you might live downtown and need some storage space. I think, if we say it's in exist, in existing buildings, or, yeah...
Within a portion of a multi-use building, is the wording?
Was the budget...
I don't know, I mean, I'm not necessarily advocating for self-storage facilities all over, but it just seemed like if it's allowed in the village center and urban center, that way...
Again, if people are living in the service center, then there might be a need for it.
I'm embarrassed to have to ask this, I don't know, do we say what portion is a portion?
No.
That might be for stipulating, I suppose. So there's a fascinating gigantic city block made to look like a real city block in Kansas City.
This is my concern of like...
Yeah. Everybody, later on, after the meeting, Google the Kansas City form-based mini storage.
Do you want to, do you want us to look at that for service center? As a conditional use?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think, I think it fits, people, people have the need, but, yeah.
We're very, very prescriptive of how it gets done in its own, you know, purposeful way, so it seems reasonable to make some more stringent stipulations on where it can be and how much it can be in a building, but still allow that flexibility.
Yeah, and remember the River Garden, they were flooding quite often downstairs there, storage.
Maybe that ended their, their storage business.
Well, that created a whole new business, so, some things happened for a reason, I guess. But yeah, I mean, is that something that can be considered?
What?
In certain buildings there?
Oh, that would be for them to decide.
Ah, gotcha.
We allow that in the, in the urban centers still, though?
Yeah.
If that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Shall I?
Yeah, I think so.
Keep moving?
I think so, yeah.
In the neighborhood center district, so the proposal here is to increase the building footprint to 20,000 square foot, max. And kind of attendant with that is if you wanted to go, I'm flipping to the next page, if you wanted to go via shop or store that was greater than 20,000 square foot, or you wanted to have a multi-family building that was larger than 20,000 square foot, the footprint, then those would be conditional uses. And so, our neighborhood center, when we did the land use regulations in 2015, we were really trying to kind of scale back the size of development there, but the reality is, we have a lot of buildings that are larger than the 12,000 square foot maximum building footprint. And so it's, you know, it's going to be a long, slow change, we can stick with it, but a lot of times we run up against it. Steve did some calculations on building size, so something like Walgreens is more than 20,000 square feet.
I think it was maybe 14, I'm forgetting exactly, but Walgreens was definitely bigger than would be allowable with the maximum waiver for building footprint that we would currently allow.
And one of the big ones is Red Clover Commons, so I think that had about a 50,000...
I think they, if it was, if it was a solid block and it didn't have that sort of cut-in, it would, it would be about 47, but it ends up being, I think, somewhere around 30, because of the, that aspect that they, they did, I think, to minimize the floor area of the building. But it still would be, I think, at least, well, that would regardless be bigger than we allow with waiver. But we do have another piece here that addresses that, so I don't want to...
So the challenge with the, the footprint, you know, it's, for us, it's, it's a little bit about the shop and store, I mean, Market 32 is bigger than the 12,000 square foot. But I think, at least from my perspective, it's more about the multi-family units, so 12,000 is, is a bit small with a waiver, you could only get up to 14,000? It's a 10% waiver?
13.
13, sorry. And so it's just really constraining, I think, with, with developers that we've been talking to, it's a little too small. And we think that, you know, other aspects of the regulations, such as, you know, not having long white walls, and having certain transparency in the windows, and, you know, breaking it up into bays, so better building design can overcome the footprint issues, so.
I wonder if it makes sense, because both Market 32 and Walgreens are single-story, single-use buildings, I wonder if it makes sense to have, the footprint can be larger if it's multi-use, or if it provides housing, or something along those lines. If that's what we want more of, then maybe if they provide what we want, then they can have more space to do with it.
I don't know if we had brought up, under the conditional use table, the way that we've done a, or proposed to work around this, is that multifamily dwelling above 20,000 square feet can be a conditional use. I see that the shopper store also is conditional use, which I, yeah, I'm less passionate about in either way. But the multifamily dwelling of 20,000 square feet as a conditional use means that that is done separately than the waiver. I think the waiver could maybe be tagged on to that, I haven't thought that through, but I don't know that you would really care to. You probably wouldn't need to if you're able to get the conditional use, but in any event, that would allow for those units to be created without having to do any sort of negotiation, sort of incentive zoning type situation.
I see Dan's hand raised.
Yeah, I suppose if you're done with that piece, I, I just wanted to draw attention to the bar or drinking place and ask a question about that.
Yep.
That one being changed from conditional. I, I don't want to, you know, rock the boat too much, but if, if that, if, if memory serves, the neighborhood center zone is where the Alda Center is in...
Yes.
Yeah. So is there a reason that that conditional use has been changed related to that, or why, why are we changing that one?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, so every time a bar or drinking place, which is really kind of, you know, food socialization kind of thing, is before the DRB, it's, you know, it seems like it's there based on a judgment or a value about whether or not that's a good place, and not so much about its impact. I mean, you can still do site plan review, you know, the town, if you want to do outdoor consumption, you need a permit for that, and, and so, you know, it's just, you know, trying to think about those places that bring a little vitality to the neighborhood and, you know, allowing them as permitted uses.
Right, and we have our nuisance noise performance standards for noise language, so, you know, we have a pathway for that under land use regulations. We also have a civil and criminal pathway, if it's not permanent to the land use regs, if it's just a, a different flavor of nuisance. So I think this allows for us to sort of endorse the fact that this district is intended for that sort of character as being a more urban neighborhood type infill with walkable neighborhood scale places to go eat and drink and then that. So taking it out of conditional use takes that level of scrutiny off of it, or that presumption of incongruent use off of it.
Is there, is there a place for the, the difference between the bar sort of classic, like a bar situation versus a drinking place? I, it would be, I mean, just to highlight what I'm getting at here, it would be kind of similar to the difference between a commercial cannabis sales place versus a, you know, a testing facility, or something like that. You see what I'm saying, like there's a difference between a social aspect and the, I know there are other protections, getting a license and so forth, which, which might have made, made the case for keeping it in conditional use. I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, I know a lot of these are subjective calls, but I'm just saying that it might still be worth keeping it in conditional use.
So the definition of a bar or drinking place is an establishment that primarily prepares and serves alcoholic beverages for immediate consumption. It may also offer limited food and live entertainment, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's a bar. It's not necessarily a restaurant that serves alcohol to. It is meant to be a bar.
And when it comes to those uses that have the word "or" in them, I think that's being lifted from the LCBS too, and I agree that it causes confusion, but that, I think, is kind of the boilerplate from that common standardized table of uses, and so I think we'd have to have a longer conversation about how other ways to pivot to standardized uses that don't involve that sort of either-or presumption, that it's actually just a single use.
Right.
Before we move on, I wanted to point out Tom's comment earlier, that the industrial park use has been left in here, which I know we didn't mean to do. So we can make sure that's stricken when it's actually proposed. Possibly also light industrial and manufacturing plant, I'm not sure.
I wouldn't say light industrial, but maybe manufacturing plant.
Yeah. We can revisit that.
So industrial, like say in South Main Street, that's industrial area, correct?
Continental area.
Got it, no, down in there. So how do you articulate that?
That's the industrial zone, specifically as industrial, so that, that will still have all of those uses, virtually all of them as permitted uses in that, in that area. But this is impacting, right now we're on the neighborhood center, but we were also wanting to take it out of the village center and service center, and I'd gladly leave any of those from the urban center.
And the other thing we're proposing, you probably see, is that single-family detached, single-family attached, did we need to do that? And duplexes would be conditional uses in the neighborhood center. I think single-family attached should be permitted. Again, trying to make these more vibrant, multi-unit, not, not a single-family.
That makes sense to me.
How does the planning commission feel about the bar or drinking place?
Should we go around?
Yeah.
Straw pull?
Apothetical.
Apothetic? Lena?
I am in favor of it being not conditional, because there are other hoops that need to be jumped through, and as Steve pointed out, other ways to make sure that they're being good neighbors.
Yeah, knowing, I'll echo that for my sake personally, and knowing where the two, but probably soon three neighborhood centers are, they're, they're on, you know, major roads, and they're not really deep into neighborhoods or anything, and definitely understood that there's a level of disturbance there, and no reason whatnot in public passage, passing through, so in light of that and the other, you know, protections that were mentioned, I think, I think, I think it'll help add, not that, you know, drinking alcohol's the only way to socialize, but it's a common way, and I think it will help add to those neighborhoods, those districts. Todd?
I honestly, if the decision is made right now, would like to read and think about that more, because I don't, I don't feel educated about that at all.
Well, we will see it again, unless, we'll see what Sarah and Dan, unless Dan feels like, I think he expressed his concern about it already, but unless you want to add anything else, and, and Sarah?
Well, just, just to respond to your, the characterization of the neighborhoods and so forth, I, I think it's a time-of-day issue. They are quiet at night, they may be loud during the day, and they may have, they're loud traffic occasionally at night, but, you know, I think there is an issue where you still would want the, a little extra oversight to the, to that development, I, I think, just to, you know, and to allow the public to, to review and, and respond to a use change like that.
Sarah?
I'm fine with it, with this change, that's been aligned, I think, you know, Tom, with you, and both of you have talked, but I can't talk, I'm sorry. Tom and Lena pointed out is that there are other, you know, things at play that can keep it from being crazy.
Okay, so now that everyone's heard everyone's comment, does anyone want to say something different? In the straw poll?
Well, I'm going to be a little devil's advocate, there's pros and cons to that, but as we were saying, having businesses like that in the outskirts versus in the city, we've dealt with that. On certain committees about the DBA, about decibel levels, music, traffic, and all that, from that experience and dealing with that, I have to agree also with you and with, and with Sarah and with everyone else, that I think we should wait and get a more, you know, timing on that, maybe, what do you think?
I'm not sure if that's what, how you or Sarah was saying.
Well, I...
I think Dan... I think Dan was saying that...
Well, I, I, I mean, that, that's what I picked, that, yeah, because I...
Oh, oh, that he personally wanted to...
Right, so I just personally think, yeah, a little bit more on that.
Well, if we move forward with it, we're gonna see it again.
Yeah.
In a final version and/or the public hearing. So in light of that, I hear two wanting to think more on it. I hear three in support, and Dan not in support. So I think it's a straw poll. We can make it a formal poll, but if someone wants to make a motion, I don't think we have to, but maybe we do. I think we're moving forward with it, but we're gonna see it again. That's mine.
Give it some time. Tom, how do you want to move forward?
So, yeah, it's seven fifty.
To speak to anything, and we have Brandy coming in March, so.
I know.
We just want to let you...
I almost feel like, I should say, for reviewing the bylaw modernization grant, we should either all email our comments to staff to Brandy, or we should schedule an intervening meeting, planning commission meeting.
An executive meeting?
But there's still the rest of these other miscellaneous things to get through as well. Things take a lot longer than hoped for.
You want a service monkey, or what's that?
Want AI to do everything for us?
I mean, I, I just, only why I'm swaying with that from experience dealing with that, especially on the DRB.
You're still, you're talking about the bar and drinking case?
I just can't shake that.
We'll, we'll talk about it again.
Yeah.
We have to move on, though. What do people think about for the bylaw modernization grant review? Scheduling another meeting to talk about that stuff? And express our questions, comments, concerns to staff? Or just emailing it all to staff?
I would like to propose that we all email within the next two weeks, and if it appears, either through our own process of going through it and writing comments, or what staff receives, that further conversation is necessary before the following meeting that we convene.
Is this a situation where we could do what we did with the ACU in December? Have a, I don't know if it was called a subcommittee or a steering committee or all that?
Subcommittee.
Okay.
It was, but unfortunately, we're three meetings later, so not much further along.
But on, on the specific...
On the Mizzou middle, or the...
Right.
Oh, the rest of these?
I think I have two twenty-four.
Oh, I just want to focus on the, the bylaw modernization grant review versus future.
Right, I mean, on, on that, if there's, is that something that we could have a subcommittee?
I don't know, I mean, we've already seen those things presented to us, and it's just a matter of us either saying, like, hey, miss that, or this looks good, or hey, that's not what I thought you were going to do, or actually I realized that I don't, I don't personally, and here's why I don't support that. It just seems like reviewing and commenting is what's in order. So, I...
I mean, yeah, emailing comments, I mean, personally, I only, I have very few comments, so, you know, if other people have similar amounts of comments, then it's maybe not a big left or right who have need to meet, but maybe what Les would say, like, it does seem like there's more discussion that needs to be made based on our email comments, then we do that.
Okay. And that's what we did for the technical review back in the summer or August or something. We emailed all of our comments based on reviewing Brandy's table and went to staff. So we'll try to do those comments in the next week, or next week?
So we send our answers to...
About the bylaw modernization grant draft.
Send it to us.
Before March, man, if you wanted to be spared.
No, and just in which week?
Oh, perfect.
I mean, we were supposed to talk about them at this meeting, but we didn't get to, so just need to write an email. But then that brings us to the last of these staff-recommended miscellaneous and use right changes, but we'll just do that next meeting?
Yeah, we can, we can do that. I, I don't know if Jason
Right, yeah.
Maybe has anything for you all to think about, Lena?
Yeah, public com, official public comment.
I appreciate the opportunity, but I'll, I'll wait till the next meeting. It's quiet.
Oh, that'd be great if you attend again. Thanks for being here.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, having grossly not finished the business of this meeting. Oh, please. That's fine.
You ruined to break this up last meeting. But I let Tom and Sue know that I'm pregnant, and so I will be stepping back for a few months, if you don't mind.
Congratulations! Awesome!
Yeah, so...
That should have been an announcement, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's not what I think. It's a bad feed. I wanted to announce it, but, you know, forgotten last time, so. Yeah, so due at the end of April, so probably starting the May meeting for a few months, I'll be absent, but I'll be back.
But here in spirit.
Congratulations.
Here in spirit. I will bring plus one.
Yes. So we have a new member now.
Yeah. Honorary now.
I can retire.
Don't tell us live for it.
We've had infants in the past.
That's right.
Yeah.
Pass the torch now. So what's some good news I found?
Yep, so we'll, we'll email our comments within a week about the Brandy's draft of the land use right changes and the NDA maps. Great. So having not finished much of the business of our meeting, I cannot adjourn us. I need a motion.
I motion that we adjourn it to our next power meeting, T four.
Okay, better be power meeting. Great, we're adjourned. No need to...
We'll have heat by that time, right? It's freezing.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.